Welcome to the Red Hook Town Board Meeting of July 25th, 2018. Would you be kind enough to join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, Ryan. And we have two Ryans here tonight, so I apologize if I confuse you, but Ryan, would you be kind enough to hand over to the screen here and we could let folks know what's on the agenda for tonight? We're gonna start off with a public hearing on an extension of a moratorium that we have on large-scale commercial extractions. Getting comments on those, we won't take any action on that this evening. We're waiting for referral back from our planning board. And then we have these items that are listed here. In addition, it didn't make it to the agenda because it was last minute. We also have a resolution approving a grant contract. We are updating our local waterfront revitalization plan. And so they sent us that contract and we need to have the resolution in support of the contract. So that's gonna be added on.
Who's the contract with?
Department of State. The grant that we received to update our LWRP, there's a contract involved. And so we have the resolution approving the contract itself. And that's gonna be right around number 10 on the agenda. So thank you very much, Ryan. So it is, in fact, 7:35 in a couple minutes. So if we could, I would like to open the public hearing. It's on Local Law D, which is an extension of the moratorium for six more months on large-scale extractions. And I will just preface it with, we enacted back in September, or it was adopted in September of last year, in response to concerns that we had about our zoning and the wheat provisions in our zoning to protect us against large-scale commercial extractions, in particular, water harvesting and sale. And so that moratorium has provided an opportunity to put together a working group, which we have, that's made some recommendations to the town board and we've given them some feedback. And we are at the point where we can begin drafting better legislation to protect those vital natural resources. It covers mining, it covers timber harvesting as well. So that's the background on that. And I would like to open the public hearing. And Claire, if you'd be kind enough to read the legal notice, please? Do you have a legal notice? All right, well suffice it to say that all persons interested in speaking on the matter, a notice was provided here at Town Hall and then the newspaper of record, that would be the Poughkeepsie Journal. And so at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. Would anybody like to make some comments on this matter? Okay.
Is it just on this matter, Robert?
Just on that matter. We'll take public comments in just a few minutes, Jim. All right, hearing, no comments on the public hearing? I would like...
Move.
Okay. You have to move a motion. I would move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Oh, see? Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
And so the planning board, which was not able to meet their second meeting in July and provide us with their referral comments, we'll get that back to us for our next meeting on August 10. So, okay, we have a couple announcements to make now and do public comment. Art Studio Views, which received a prestigious award for their event this year. I think they're celebrating 10 or 11 years, if you're familiar with that. It's an event that happens every Labor Day weekend where artists within a several township area open their doors for residents and others to take a look at their work in their studios. And it's really a terrific event. This year, there are 30 artists in German town, Tivoli, Red Hook, Rhinebeck, and Hyde Park. You can look at their website, Art Studio Views, September 1st and 2nd, from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. to get more information about the event. The other announcement I would like to make, if you have not already noticed, pleased to let you know that New York State Department of Transportation, after working on this for three years, granted our request to lower the speed limit in the town of Red Hook on Route 9G to 45 miles an hour. This is one of the recommendations that was made on the upper Route 9G feasibility study. And they made that change about a week ago with the speed limit sign. So I think you'll notice when you drive on Route 9G, and I'm talking about from East Market Street all the way through Tivoli and north of Tivoli, I think you'll notice that traffic is moving at a much safer speed. And hopefully, for those of you who have been very nervous about your safety traveling on that road and living on that road, hopefully you'll see great benefits. So wanted to let you know that. Okay, so it is time for some public comments. And Linda, would you like to start us off?
I'm here for the fifth time regarding Papa's Best Batch BBQ signs. I had sent two emails to the CEO and the building inspector with copies to you. And this is the third time I've come for you, asking you to look at the illegal signage, both what's on the trees and the sign that's near the road. The open sign extends into the right of way. In fact, the whole sign is in the right of way. So it should be amended, changed, eliminated. Do it.
Thank you, Linda. I know that the department was out there. I don't know what the result of that was, but they did take a look at it. Thank you. Would anyone else like to make some public comments tonight?
Hi. I was at the meeting on Monday regarding the Red Hook Park West.
Can you just say your name?
Oh, my name is Ben Centerfit. I own the community music space up the street at the Chocolate Factory. I am a neighbor surrounding the property and I was at the meeting on Monday regarding the expansion project and came away from that meeting relatively frustrated, mostly just in that the group is not willing to look into the idea of doing a needs assessment. And the needs assessment that was done was done in 1994. A lot has changed in the community. There's a lot of opportunity for us to create broad plans that have a wise future, maybe 20 or 30 years later, that we're looking at when we're developing a plan. And to not look into doing a needs assessment, to me, is irresponsible. So that's what I wanted to come here to say and recommend, that we do a needs assessment before moving forward with the expansion. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Jim Hegstetter. I'm a town official. I'm on the Zoning Board of Appeals. I did think we got a commitment from you, Robert, at that meeting to do a needs assessment. And I was here to thank all of you for having the meeting on Monday. I thought it was very informative. But I do believe that you committed to doing something like that. And we're gonna look at a needs assessment then. And I think it has to be discussed further by the board before there's an outlay of millions of dollars for this particular project that's on the docket right now. I think any kind of needs assessment, spending $20,000 before we commit millions and millions of dollars of Red Hook taxpayer money to development of a park that is going to serve just, I think, a small amount of the community is a great concern to me. And a fiduciary responsibility of the board would be to look at this. The last needs assessment was done 26 years ago. Robert, I'm glad that you're gonna put that on the table. Hopefully you vote on that at this meeting. I know emails were sent, but I think Sue was out. So she wasn't able to put those on the agenda for this evening. So I look forward to hearing where that's going and what you're gonna be doing. Okay? Thank you.
Would anybody else like to make some public comments?
Hi, I'm Tricia Papendorf. I've attended a few of these meetings and I've learned a lot about this Red Hook Park West over the past few months. And I just have to say that I'm echoing what has already been said in terms of needing a needs assessment. There is a very strong voice in this community interested in having that done. And I'm curious what the opposition would be to do that. It seems like a small project in scale of the size of the development that would occur there. So why don't we just, as a community, respect these voices and get that done? It would tell us what we need to know and then we can move forward. I just, the voice is strong right now and it's disappointing if it isn't heard. We live in a really small town. We should be able to do that, yeah?
Thank you, Tricia. Would anybody else like to make some public comments? So we will move on to the agenda. First item on the agenda is... is the resolution in support of an application. So tonight, we'll be talking about several grants. One is a grant application that's been submitted. I think now this will be the third time. It's to the Office of Parks Preservation. It is for restoration of Montgomery Place. The grant application comes from Bard College. They have sought to receive our endorsement each and every year. And because Montgomery Place is in fact open to the public, we have always looked favorably upon their applications. And maintenance of that building and repairs to that building are key, obviously, if the public is going to have continued access to it. So the application is essentially the same as it has been the last two years. And we have this resolution without a number. That'd be... I'm sorry?
Forty-two.
Forty-two. Date is July 25th, 2018. And I will just tell you very briefly, it's for exterior restoration of the building, certain elements of the building. And so, resolution number 42, whereas Bard College is applying to New York State Office of Parks, Rec and Historic Preservation for a grant under the EPF for a park project to be located at Montgomery Place, a site located within our jurisdiction. And whereas the requirement under the program is that they must obtain an endorsement of this governing body, and therefore, the Town Board of the town of Red Hook endorses the application of Bard College for a grant under the ETF Fund, which is labeled Farmhouse and Mansion Restoration Project. And it's located within the town of Red Hook. And I so moved. All right, thanks, Sarah. But in that first, any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Well, it turns out they have a second grant that they would like a letter of support for. And I think this is a little more interesting than the first application provided. The slides come up. But they are applying to Greenway. Greenway has some money this year to connect to the Empire State Trail. If you're not aware, the Empire State Trail is a 750-mile initiative of the governor to connect trails throughout New York State. The Empire State Trail is slated to go off the River Road after it crosses the Kingston-Ryancliff Bridge. And Bard College, seeing the need to not only connect to that, but also connect their two properties, their main campus to Montgomery Place, is seeking to put a bridge where they believe a bridge used to exist many years ago, over the Sawkill. And these are just some illustrations that they supplied in their application. But it would be a non-motorized bridge. It would be for pedestrians and bikes to get across safely so they wouldn't have to go up on the road. These are just some illustrations for you to see. And what's great about this is that if they do, if they are able to connect this, it will be for those carriage trails, for those of you familiar with Montgomery Place. This bridge will, and those carriage trails, will become a part of the Greenway Trail system. So the public will be able to use these trails. And here is a historic map showing the bridge over the Sawkill, very near the proposed location. They have found actually some foundation as part of their exploration. They are not disturbing the banks at all. It's going to be all above the banks. If you're familiar with the triangle area there in Anandale, it's near the Publications Building, near the mill. It's a historic plate showing the rustic bridge crossing the Sawkill. And Ryan, you'll be happy to know your schematics look better than their schematics back in the 1800s. And here's the crossing location. Okay, I think that's... Here's a little bit more of an aerial for you to see. If you're familiar with it, this would be the Publications Building closer to the road here. There'll be a path, a light bulb, so we're out for lighting, safe lighting. All of this has to go through our planning board and our design review. And they've submitted their application to them as well. It's all contingent upon that. And obviously, having the rest of the funding for that, I believe they're applying for $75,000 or something like that for Greenway for this project. So this would be the resolution number 43, dated July 25th.
So moved, or do you need to read it first?
Well, just supporting Bard College's application for a Greenway grant for Sawkill pedestrian crossing. And I think I've described the program well enough. So we'll take your motion, Christine.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? We're on to item number three. Item number three is related to our grant.
Please, a message.
It should be or something. It came in a separate email. All right. Number three is the resolution approving our grant to EPF Parks and Recreation for the Red Park West project. One of the obstacles to doing a project like this is funding. And so we identified a potential funding source. And so we have decided to make this application for CFA grant for half a million dollars for this project. And we have with us our engineer here, Ryan Morrison, who is just gonna give us a very brief update. I should tell you, we had, as folks reference, we had some info sessions for, to get public input on the project as it might potentially look. And so that input was actually very helpful. Folks came and I think we have a better design because of it. And Ryan, maybe you can speak to some of the changes since it was last in front of the Town Board. And so what we're doing tonight is not approving the project. We're not even actually finalizing the design. What we're doing is just approving a grant application. So there'll be probably in August, there'll be a meeting at which we look at the project and approve it just for the design, because we engaged an engineer months ago to come up with a design for Red Park West. And so we will be taking that question up at our next meeting probably, because we have, I think, three weeks in between. We've been talking about just the minor tweaks as well.
Yep.
So for tonight, we're really just addressing the grant application. And I think you'll hear some robust discussion about needs assessment in August and when to do a needs, an updated needs assessment. So I want you to know that we urge your comments tonight in another meetings as well. And we did do our best to try to check all the underlying assumptions and check with all the groups involved, with all the sports here in our community to get some idea of what changes in the underlying assumptions there may be. But we will talk about the needs assessment at our next meeting and the project itself, the final design schematic. So, all right, so...
Okay, I'll just specialize and recuse myself now, just, I think usually, even before you discuss.
Okay.
So I'm gonna recuse myself from the discussion because I work for a firm that writes grants for this kind of project and we're actually applying under the same program. And even though I'm not writing the grant, I just wanna recuse myself so that there's no feeling of conflict by either my client or the town. So I'm just gonna step off. I think that's what you're supposed to do, right?
Yes, please.
Right, okay.
Thank you, Sarah.
Well, before I be here and want you to sign it.
Do you think I can talk up at the screen if I talk loud enough? Or would you permit the microphone?
I think if you talk loud enough, that'd be better. This way you can point and say things.
So as I think many of you in the room are aware of, we were brought in February to help the town with the Red Park West project. When we started that project, we were given the 2013 master plan that looked much like this drawing right up here. The 2013 master plan had four multipurpose rectangular fields. It had a 90-foot baseball diamond in this location and it had a 45-foot baseball diamond slash softball diamond up in the northwest corner. It also had a very oddly shaped parking lot, which was a requirement due to the lack of space. Since this 2013 master plan, the town was able to acquire land right here, which allowed us to put a much more safe and simple parking lot in that would allow people to leave the facility a little bit easier. The 2013 master plan was kind of the basis of where we started off. But the town asked us to take a look at that master plan and see how we could change some of the assumptions made in that master plan to make the project better fit the town's needs. As part of that need, the town had identified the potential to provide a unique regional amenity within the area for a challenger field. This challenger field would provide ADA access, but it wouldn't only be for challenger activities. It would handle a lot of other activities within the municipality, such as Little League baseball, softball, you know, flag football. There's a U-12 soccer field. And those were all things that we identified that they potentially play here. So given this master plan and given that starting design criteria for this smaller challenger field, we moved into kind of re-moving the pieces around and make it best fit the town. And so we went on, if you wanna go to the next slide. What we came up with was actually what we presented at the last board in kind of our closed caption meetings. For many of you that weren't here, what was that, what month was that, Robert? Was that two months ago that we were here?
Something like that.
Something like that.
Two or three months.
And since that time, we've done, as Robert said, three info sessions with the community, where the community was able to voice what they were looking for, for additional design criteria for the facility. It gave us a lot of time to kind of talk with folks and see, you know, how we could program the space in the north of the lot and how we could make it better fit access. And a lot of people voiced a lot of different concerns. And so this is almost the updated master plan file. What's not incorporated is some comments that happened on Monday night. And we'll get to those. But these revisions do incorporate everything from the last two, or the first two info sessions. So changes that have occurred to the total master plan since it's last been presented with Town Board is we've included some crossing across Linden App that will include a crosswalk and hopefully some signage as we'll work out with the county park transportation. We're also showing a multimodal path. One of the concerns that a lot of the community members voiced was getting people to and from the site, especially with it being adjacent to Red Park East, which is over here. They wanted to provide an area where both bikes and pedestrians could make it to the park. So the pathway was widened. We originally were showing, actually at the time we had presented it, we weren't showing the sidewalk. We had always anticipated of putting a sidewalk, but it wasn't on the plan. So we showed the sidewalk and we widened it to 10 feet so that we have room for bikes and pedestrians. We've also added a bike rack in this location. Bike racks are to help keep the bikes out of the facilities and doing damage to other facilities, but still allow a place for people to tie their bike up. Another thing that came out of that meeting, or those meetings, was the idea of screening some of this adjacent property. We're adding some vegetation to those areas. The vegetation type and size is still to be determined. We're working that information out at the moment. Another item we're showing now is a walking area around the outside of the fields. I think that's something we always anticipated as the working group, but we didn't show it well. So now we're showing, it's a half a mile walking trail around the outside of the multipurpose rectangular fields, which are part of a future phase. In addition to that, we're showing a nature area up here. There's one acre of land that we're showing set aside at the moment. And we're still in the midst of getting some feedback of what exactly that will entail. We're thinking a meadow area with picnic tables, hopefully providing some view shed back towards this way, away from the athletic facilities, to kind of simulate what's currently out there. In addition, we're now showing a trail that comes down along the edge of the wetlands and back up here. This connects to a property where there's the Village to Village Trail. That's a town of Red Hook-owned property. In addition, in the future, we're hoping that this trail will connect to the land trust over here that the town is working on. One of the other comments we received during our info sessions was that some of the folks would like to see a handicapped accessible nature trail. So we've added a small loop because of the topography on site, making it a very large trail. It's barely tough. So we had to keep the ADHL up along here. Also serves as a connection to the meadow area. And there's some areas set aside up here for some bocce ball pits, horseshoe pits, and anything else the town would like to plan in that area. That is basically all of the updates to the plan at this time that came out of those info sessions.
Can you just mention what the tweak that still needs to be done on this?
Of course.
If you could go over what is capable of being played on this field?
Today?
Yeah, you talked about why this field is unique.
Yep.
And maybe you could go over that also for the public.
Sure. So this field is particularly unique because we're trying to schedule so many different uses on it. A lot of the challenger facilities that are close to us are specifically challenger facilities. So they're not very often played on, they're not played on as much as a field could be. They're played on, they're played on when there's an ADA use and ADA use only. And that's because of the way they're designed. They're designed often as a hardcore, so they're asphalt with a rubberized surface on top, which makes them very... on top, which makes them very difficult and dangerous for able-bodied children to play on because the ball moves faster for unable-bodied children, the bounce doesn't occur right, and it also leads to a potential for concussion. What we've done is we've provided a synthetic turf field that's ADA accessible and that able-bodied children can play almost any sport on. In the configuration we're currently showing it, this field, like I said, will take U-12 soccer, flag football, Little League baseball, Little League softball, JV softball, varsity softball as it sits. One of the things that came up in the info sessions was that the Little League was wondering if it would be possible for us to make the diamond convertible. And the diamond would be this infield area that typically on a, you know, field would be clay, a typical baseball field would be a clay area. They wanted to know if we could make that convertible from a 45-foot pitching mound and a 60-foot base path to a 50-foot pitching mound and a 70-foot base path. And there's a lot of ways we can do that with it being synthetic turf. But part of the requirement is to make it a 50-foot, 70-foot conversion field is to increase the outfield length. And so right now, the foul line to this side is 215, the foul line length to this side is 205, and out to center field is 205. To make it a 50-70 conversion field, we need to do 225 to the outfield at the foul lines. And it's recommended that we do 275 to center field. We've agreed and we've actually got confirmation today from the Little League president for the Ryan Beck Red Hook Little League that we can get away with doing 225 to the right foul pole and 225 to the left foul pole, but only 250 to center field. And we're just gonna provide a higher fence in that area. And that will allow that to additionally service 12 to 13-year-old children, which currently the town does not own a field to do. And so that opens this field up to another user group that currently is not being serviced in the town. And to do that, we're likely going to have to shift the field down a little bit. And so that's gonna maybe have us revise the length of one of these fields. And so that's a revision you guys will see before you see it next. Okay?
Very good. So again, if you would repeat all the things that can be done on the field because I think that's important for folks to realize.
Sure.
Is there isn't a field like this anywhere in the Hudson Valley as far as we know. This has the most utility of any playing field that we know about, right?
When Frandy and I, who's a colleague of mine, did research to go look for a facility similar to this so we could see kind of some of the design points, we ended up driving out all the way to Webster, New York. For those of you that don't know where Webster is, it's almost a buffer. There's a couple of fields like this in New Jersey and there's some fields out west, but fields similar to this in this region don't exist. The sports, again, are challenger, multipurpose rectangular, challenger baseball, Little League baseball, Little League softball, JV softball, varsity softball, and now 50-70 conversions such as junior baseball.
And soccer.
And U-12 soccer in addition, correct, with flag football.
With flag football.
Yep.
So that's quite a few sports all on one field.
All on one field, okay.
Where do the spectators go?
There's a lot of opportunity for spectators in this facility. We have an area that's paved behind the back of the backstop, which would be a good opportunity for a set of bleachers. Speaking with John Kuhn and Doug Strwinski, what they're looking for is like a semi-permanent but portable bleacher that they use in their other facilities. And they don't, they're not very space demanding. So in addition to being in the back of the dugout, there's some flat space up here, which will provide angle viewing back this way and in addition up this way. This is a, without marking the TV here, this is all a grassed area. And so in addition to being bleachers, you have the opportunity to set lawn chairs or anything like that. Additionally, as part of the detail we were working out before we stopped on our design work, we're trying to figure out how this synthetic turf is required to set into a concrete curb, needs to be to a hard surface that it gets glued to. And so we were thinking about putting a, behind that curb so you don't have to mow up to the curb, either a stone walkway around the back of this or something to that effect. And this will be all a hillside, so it'll be a great opportunity to sit on a grass hillside if you'd like to view and you're able to get back there. So that's an additional viewing area at some point that might be available for use.
Sure. Okay. All right, well, thank you, Ryan.
Yep.
And so as we discussed at our last meeting, we have a resolution just to approve the grant application. That would be resolution number 43, is that right?
Forty-four.
Forty-four. Dated July 25th, authorizing application for a grant under the EPF, whereas the town proposes to apply to Office of Parks, Rec and Historic Preservation for a grant under the EPF Fund for a Rec Park project located in the town of Red Hook. And whereas the proposed grant is in the amount of half a million dollars for improvements, including, and you mentioned the improvements, the ADA, I guess we should sort of show you, right, Ryan? This is what would be sort of the Phase One.
This is the project we're submitting a grant for.
Correct. Okay, just so people are clear on that. So to execute and submit an application to New York State Office of Parks and Rec for a grant in the amount of half a million dollars. And who would like to make a motion?
Robert, can I ask a question? Can you make a motion when they have asked for a needs assessment? I mean, can you do, can you ask for a needs assessment at the same time as you do the grant? Because why would you want a grant if there's not really a need for something?
Unfortunately, we have grant deadlines. I'm sorry. The grant deadline is actually this, so we're, we resolved to apply for grant monies because obviously cost is something that we heard even here tonight, so.
Robert, how much will that project?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it's.
Just a question, how much will that project cost at finish?
They are still, they are still working out the numbers, but I think you had a fairly recent number of about 1.6 and realized that we have some grant money, we're applying for more grant money, and we may get some forced labor and we also may get some donated services. And just for folks out there, we also can have a friends group who, if they take over some portion of labor responsibility, can get some of the work done maybe.
So you mentioned that there was going to be a needs assessment, is that?
Yeah, I'm sorry, we're not in a public comment period, but I did mention that at the next meeting, we would have a very robust discussion about needs assessment.
Is there an opportunity for a robust discussion this evening?
There is not, I'm sorry. There is not, but I think you hear, you hear that we will definitely be taking up that discussion.
There's just a lack of logic saying that you're presenting the final designs next month.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it's not a public comment period.
Right.
I'm sorry. Okay, we have a resolution, it's number 44 dated July 25th. Who would like to move the resolution?
I'll move it.
Okay, thank you, Christine. Second, is there any further conversation, discussion?
I intend to have a, to not vote. I think this is preliminary and it shouldn't be done now. And we shouldn't, we shouldn't, nor should we, should we go forward and perhaps be awarded a grant that maybe should go to a more, someone else who really is ready to go.
Okay, well, that's your opinion, okay. Thank you very much, Carrie. Any other further discussion?
No, I would just like to say that the grant deadline is when the grant deadline is. And so if we decide ultimately to move ahead with the project, having bypassed the opportunity to have $500,000 for is also not very responsible to all of the residents of the town of Red Hook, not just the people who have very nicely come out to the various meetings and all the people who volunteer on the Rec Committee and the people who have worked on, you know, developing the master plan for many years. And as was discussed earlier, you know, sometimes takes 20, 30 years for these projects to come to fruition, and that's what's happening now. There was a plan and it's taken this long to be able to bring it forward. So this is an opportunity I see to not shut ourselves out of an opportunity. It does not necessarily mean that A, we're gonna get the grant, it would be great if we did, but I just think it would be short sight of us not to apply for the opportunity.
And then just as a reminder, we did have a public hearing on the application, the CDBG application, and made clear to the public what the project was for, and we received no negative input on this project. We did receive the grant in 2017. We did have a public hearing then as well. And so I will call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carrie, name?
I'm Steve.
Yours, Steve? Okay. All right, thank you very much. The resolution is approved. Thank you all for coming. I will remind you that the project itself is open to more input and more comments. And so we welcome your written and otherwise your input. Okay, we are moving right on to item number four. Teresa Burke, our Highway Superintendent, is here to discuss.
I have to take your screen over for a few minutes.
Oh, would you like my screen? I may have it there.
I got it.
You got it there?
Yep.
Do you have more than we have? Because I can just be your page turner for you if you like.
No, I've got the photos, you've got the copy.
Oh, okay.
So if you'll bear with me for just a moment.
Oh, that's fine.
I've been practicing this all day.
I practiced how to get me back on the screen, however.
I'm sure Sarah can help you with that.
Oh, okay.
She's tech savvy.
Okay.
Okay, so this is the Echo Valley Road Safety Study Report. On July 14th, the Town of Red Hook Highway Department met with Echo Valley Road residents, the Cornell Local Roads Program Director, and two members of the Duchess County Transportation Council to evaluate and discuss concerns on Echo Valley Road, specifically traffic, speeding, safety, walkability, bikability, and drainage. Prior to the meeting, we had sent questionnaires out to the 39 households on the road and asked for their feedback. Thirteen people responded, please forgive me, I'm a little bit cam-shotted. And we chose four residents at random to participate in the walkthrough and the meeting. And the following is a report on that study. And as you can see, it was nice weather, we had a nice walk, we talked, we cleared up a lot of questions, and we got this study out of it. So the portion of Echo Valley Road that runs between the county bridge and 199 is due to be resurfaced, and that is right here and going here. The length is 3,200 feet and the width varies with narrowest point at the bridge at 19 feet and an average width of 25.5 feet. Now that average width is from Willard Road here to here. It narrows down considerably at that end. Including the two-foot shoulders, which contain drainage and catch basins. The surface is asphalt pavement, which is in need of repair. The road connects Frailly Lane to Route 199 and is used as a through road for those wishing to avoid the traffic light at the intersection in the village of Red Hook at State Route 9. The current vehicle count is approximately 450 vehicles per day and the speed limit is illegally marked at 20 miles per hour. The actual speed limit is 35 miles per hour. There's been one crash recorded for this section since 2008, a drunk driver that ran off the road at Blue Echo right here, and he didn't sustain serious injuries. One single-vehicle accident. Traffic. Been there, done that. Overall traffic has been increasing on Echo Valley Road as people seek to avoid the light on Route 9 and 199. The use of GPS and apps like Waze have made it easier for non-residents to find this road. There was an uptick of 50 vehicles per day in the traffic count in 2011, the same year that the village traffic light timing was changed by the New York State DOT. General consensus by the residents is that the change in timing made Route 9 village traffic worse. And this is especially when the school buses are out. My husband drives a school bus, he gets stuck in that traffic all the time, it's backed up, people just take the shortcut. They wanna save that two minutes to get where they're going, so they cut through your neighborhood. The Highway Department recommends that the town reach out to the village and the New York State DOT to evaluate the timing change. However, with the use of GPS, this may not have any significant effect on traffic. And this has become a real problem for all of us. Residents feel that there is consistent speeding on this portion of the way and that paving the road will increase the speeds. Currently, the speed limit is illegally posted at 20 miles per hour. This means that the speed limit is actually 55 miles per hour according to state law. To a walker, our informal studies have shown that the average vehicle speed is 32 miles per hour. To a walker, that speed can feel even faster. The townwide speed limit is 35 miles per hour, which is appropriate for the road design on this section. By replacing the illegal signs with the correct speed limit of 35 miles per hour, we can open the door for enforcement by local police agencies. Tickets given under the current conditions can easily be dismissed by the courts. And the way we did this was Mike Foreman, Rick, took my car and sat in different people's driveways with a speed gun at different times during the day. Most of the people ignored him. He was surprised at the amount of cell phone use, there were a lot of distracted drivers. And he also knows everybody, so he knew who was a resident, who was a speeding resident, but we're not gonna tell who those people were because they were in a hurry to get Safety for residents, pedestrians, and bicycles. This portion of Echo Valley Road was designed by the developers in the late 1980s according to the town highway specifications at the time. The road is 22-foot wide with two-foot paved shoulders that contain drainage features such as catch basins and culvert pipes. And you can see way up here, there's a catch basin right in the shoulder of the road, one on the other side, provides drainage for the runoff. The current paving makes the road look like it is 26 feet wide. There has been discussion about the need to physically narrow the road to increase safety. This may have the opposite effect as it will eliminate the shoulders that are used by the walkers on the road. While walking the road, it was noted that there was no clear designation of the shoulder area, but we were walking in one direction, joggers were coming in the other, cars would pass us, there was room for all of that. It just gives vehicles a sense that the road is wider than the actual travel lanes. They can't tell the difference. So the town can explore options to create a visually separate shoulder. And by the town, I mean the town board because they're the ones who set the policies and change the specifications. Edge striping. The pavement's narrowest width is 24.5 feet. A 20-foot lane can be created with paint striping at the edges, which would leave two or three-foot shoulders for pedestrians and bicycles. Currently, there are no striped roads in the town except for Hanover Drive. The town board would have to create a policy for road striping, include the appropriate use on town roads, a budget would be estimated and funded with the traffic control budget line. Road striping is not in keeping with our country road look. Now, when I started as Highway Superintendent, I didn't know the roads that well. So someone said to me, well, if they don't have a stripe on them, they're ours. So county roads, state roads, they're all striped, very few country roads are striped. And I still use that when I wanna describe it to other people.
Good, but if you repaint this, it'll be 26 feet wide, right?
It'll be 22-foot wide and two-foot paved shoulders on either side.
That's 26.
I'll answer your questions at the end, Phil.
But that doesn't look like a country road either, does it? 26-foot wide road.
Phil, can I finish my presentation, please? I'm glad I have your attention now.
Yeah.
I will answer your questions at the end. We're getting to that. Chip seal paved, shoulder paving. This is a creative way to pave, which would result in a contrast between the shoulder and the traveled way without a painted line. The road would be resurfaced with asphalt and then a chip seal would be applied to the shoulders only, which would look like gravel but still be walkable. The travel lane would be 20 feet wide with a two- The travel lane would be 20 feet wide with a two-foot shoulder on either side, and the drainage would not change. This outlined shoulder would provide an area on which to step off from the road while walking, but will still give enough room for vehicles to move over and passing bicycles. The pavement height would be consistent from the travel lane to the shoulder, because it's only a little quarter inch of gravel on top of oil there on the edge.
And the gravel just changes the color.
The gravel changes the color. Wouldn't cause a transition issue for the pedestrians or the vehicles. The chip seal surface would have to cure. There would be loose gravel on the road for a time until it was swept off. And chip seals are not bicycle-friendly, until they're really, really used. May result in more bikes in the 20-foot travel lane. There has been a suggestion to narrow the road and reconstruct the roadway, to physically narrow the road to 22 feet. The cost of engineering and construction would almost double the dollar amount of the paving project. Drainage pipes, catch basins, driveway entrances, mailboxes would need to be removed and relocated. The construction would disturb every lawn on the street. The shoulder would disappear. The residents would be walking and biking on the roadway and would have to step off into drainage ditches and onto lawns if they were crowded by oncoming traffic. If you take a look at the village's narrowed 20-foot streets, you can see the tire marks on the lawn. You can see the ruts on the side of the road where people have to turn wide. And when you're walking on a village street, you're either in the road or on someone's lawn. I can tell you, as a frequent dog walker, if I walk my dog through someone's lawn, they start to scream. There are some options. Traffic calming. Complete street features. This is a blurry photo of a bulbout, a bumpout. I couldn't get a clear one. This we call a bulbout. And this fancy thing is a chicane. They're all designed to slow traffic down, narrowing the lane, making people stop and think. Complete streets design encourages the use of wider shoulders for bikes and pedestrians. Providing a visually narrow lane tests the theory of traffic calming with narrow roads. The town does not have a striping policy or curbing, and many of the commonly-used features, such as these bulbouts, bumpouts, and chicanes, are designed for speeds under 30 miles per hour. The town can explore these options when they update the highway specifications and decide if it wants to fund the creation and implementation of these new options. So, we have a bumpout that we made on Bosberg Road where it meets Starbarrack. And the idea there was, we wanted people to come to a stop, because they were just barreling straight through, and traffic was coming this way, and Starbarrack was the through road. So, we made this nice little paved area, grass, put delineators up, and there's one guy who keeps going right through those delineators. And he must have a really crummy car, because I don't know why he wants to hit this thing all the time. But you can see his tires going straight through that. So, if you don't have the curbing, if you don't have a physical barrier, it's not going to be effective. Other signage. The county bridge at the end of this section is 18 feet wide. Now, you can see this is the narrow section as it approaches the bridge, but it gets very narrow right there. Much narrower than the roadway. Over the years, there have been cases where vehicles have had near misses because the transition from the road to the bridge is suddenly narrow. The town Highway Superintendent has reached out to the Duchess County Department of Public Works, and as the owner of the bridge, Duchess County is responsible for the signage. We have asked them to evaluate whether this qualifies as a one-way bridge and to update the signs to current MUTCD standards. Originally, the bridge railing had reflectors that made it easier to see the outline of the structure at night, and we have asked that they be reinstalled. This bridge acts as a pinch point between the two sections of road, slows traffic temporarily. One fellow who lives right near the bridge said he saw a car get wedged on the bridge by a landscape trailer. Landscape trailers especially don't want to go through town, so they come this back way. That was an unreported incident. There was no injury. I don't know what the damage was. He said it was a heck of a time getting them unstuck. So, the summary of this is that the Highway Department has four clear action items for Echo Valley Road. One, update the illegal speed limit signs from 20 miles per hour to 35 miles per hour. I don't think I touched on the drainage issue. There's one resident that had water ponding on the road in front of the property, and we propose to correct the drainage features on the low spot of the road. We'll monitor the result and then determine if there's a need for additional work prior to paving next year. We can take care of that drainage issue this year and see if it's working before we pave next year. So, the action items, update the illegal speed limit signs from 20 miles per hour to 35 miles per hour. Fix the drainage issue near 24 Echo Valley Road. Repave the road in 2019. Follow up on the request of the county to update the bridge signage. All of the other options should be explored by the town board. It is key that any discussion on changing the road physically should include the involvement and the education of the residents of the Town of Red Hook, especially those that will be directly affected by any proposal on Echo Valley Road. A formal safety study along with public information meetings and outreach may provide more specific information going forward, if you don't feel that this study has revealed some things about Echo Valley Road. New policies for the future roads can be developed and implemented. Radar speed signs and pace cars, such as those the town is proposing for Route 9G, may also be used. So, I've attached a breakdown of costs for the project and the options. And there's a narrow bridge sign that we want to get replaced. That was put up in 1981, so it's not very reflective anymore.
Is there one on the other side?
Yes, there's one on either side. Yep. So, here's the paving cost comparison. First slide is the basic paving, based on this year's prices. Straight two-and-a-half-inch asphalt, regular width of the road. We do have to mill it down, so it doesn't raise any of the profile. It'll correct any crown issues that we have with that drainage. Striping, $2,000. So, if you're doing your paving with striping, it's $99,000. The chip seal, we got an estimate for $9,000. So, that raises the cost to $106,000. Reconstruction, $80,000. So, that'd be $177,000. The last bar is my current budget, and that is $253,000. Now, any questions?
The chip seal shoulders are, that's what's $8,000, did you say?
$9,000.
And that's just to put the gray, the gray part.
Yes, so what you would see with a chip seal shoulder is you would have a 20-foot lane, and then on either side, you would have a two-foot strip of gravel. Now, some of the original asphalt shoulders will be a little further out, but it will give you a designated travel lane without paint.
So, well, first I want to thank you for going out and doing this and getting the town residents on the committee too, and I read your report today, so it was really helpful.
Thanks.
I have a question about the chip seal and the drainage features.
Sure.
Because that would be the area where the drainage features are, correct? So, while the gravel is loose and, you know, getting firmly into the oil and then before it's swept, and then still, even after it's swept, there'll be more of it for a while, is there a negative effect on the drainage features?
You'd probably get a little bit in the catch basins, but they have to be maintained on occasion anyway, so we'd probably put a plate over it while they were doing the process, so the bulk of it would stay on the road.
And then what keeps it from moving into people's lawns?
Well, there'd be a little bit of an edge. It could move into people's lawns, but what typically happens is you put it down, and then after it's cured, I think it's like after the next rain, it has to get a little cool. Then you come along with the sweeper, and you sweep the bulk of it up. So, there's always a little bit of loss, but, you know, now, let's be clear on this proposal. This is not a proposal. This is an outline of options that you can choose. I am not proposing many of these things, other than you think about it, you see the cost, and you evaluate what is necessary on Echo Valley Road with the findings that we have.
Okay, so, I think myself as a town board member, I appreciate, first of all, just the whole effort, and second, that you divided this options assessment into things that your department can do or, you know, could potentially do now or in the future, and also things that are town board issues, because so many times I think we become confused in our conversations about what are the options out there, and what are the actual points that the town board has to wrestle with. So, my question about this is, I think we might need, at least I would need, a little more feedback from you about, for example, with striping, that's a new frontier potentially. Are you, the $2,000 quote, I assume is having like an outside contractor come and do striping, or would there be interest? Or, you know, like, would there be interest by your department in, you know, if the town board made a policy that allowed for road striping? It seems like we should assess whether it makes sense for the town to have an internal striping mechanism.
You could. This is based on a contractor coming in. Hanifer Drive, $1,350.
Right.
Yellow stripe up the center and the two arrows.
And in a sense, like, if it's kind of a every once in a while situation, then $2,000-ish per project is a pretty decent.
Striping, once you do it, you do it, and you do it, and you do it, because you're going to be plowing. And you might get away with two years of striping.
Right.
But you're going to have to keep doing it. Then you're going to have to decide, where else are we going to use striping? Who else is going to want this? You know, there's a lot to think about. That's why it's a policy issue and not a, you know, a simple maintenance issue.
Right, but it's sort of something, I think your department knows how likely, you know, what the cost should be to have a striping system, because that's like a computer, it's like software plus, is there a special machine?
No, sometimes there's just machines, and then it puts the paint down, and you have to buy the paint. You have to make sure it's dry, and then you have to put it out there. It's not, it's not.
Training.
You know, I don't think it's all that difficult, but it's just something that, once you start a policy in the town and you use it for one road, you have the potential to use it for a lot of roads, because people are going to say, "Well, I can't see the edge of my road in the fog, so can you put that striping on my road too?" And then you have to go into a striping program, and that does become expensive, because then you have to do it every single year.
I guess what would be helpful for me, just personally, and I think maybe nobody else feels this way, would be to know, like, have you, as sort of an addendum to this, we encounter several times a year instances where we could potentially use striping, or it's our opinion that this is sort of like a very every once in a while thing, and you could make a policy, but we don't really care to, or, you know what I mean? Like, just some, like, way of understanding, is it beyond Echo Valley Road, the striping thing?
Well, this, actually, this was the only safety study that I've done on a town road.
Well, you've probably looked at other roads that are wide like this, and, I mean, like you said, all of our roads don't have striping, other than Hanifer Drive. I know my road is much narrower than this one, so I assume nobody's ever asked for striping.
Most of our roads are 20, 20-sco.
But not all of them.
And nobody's, and let's get it clear, they're not asking me for striping.
Sure.
I was asked to study the road, so this is the results of the study that I did. These were the feasible options that could be done within a reasonable budget. So, and I'll get to more of that in just a minute, but are there any more questions about this?
No, just thank you for doing it. It opens up a lot of thoughts. I know when the Complete Streets Committee gets started, which I hope is very soon, which are an integral part of that, you can cover these issues. I guess that my only question would be is, do you know of an example of a road that we could take a look at where the chip seal is on the shoulder? And if you do come across that.
Some people are just chip sealing their shoulders because they're trying to keep them strong, but no, this is not a common practice either. It's just something that was discussed with David Orr from Cornell as an option, where if you want to preserve that country road look, you want to narrow your lane, but you don't want to spend a lot of money, you can do this.
Didn't we chip seal, ropey road?
We did a fiber mat, and that's in my next slide. I'm going to have a conversation about some of those other processes. It looks the same, but it's a little bit different. So, when you're looking at these numbers and this kind of stuff, the current budget, you really have to get a sense of the entire picture of the town budget. It is budget time. We are talking about budget, and I want to talk about specifically where the town is in their budget for their roads. So, this blue line represents the town's contribution of $65,000 in our major road, our capital road improvement. This yellow line is CHIPS. That's the Capital Highway Improvement Program. That is a state match. We spend the money, they give it back. So, we, it's revenue and an expense, it comes out even. The two together are our current budget. That's that green square. The recommended budget for a road network with 60 miles of road, like ours, is $500,000, because a road will last you 15 years. You've got 60 miles. You should be doing four miles a year, doing something to four miles a year. Currently, we're doing two, two-and-a-half, less than two, and we're doing rehab. We're milling the roads, we're grinding the roads. They've just fallen apart, and we only have enough money to do that, to two miles a road. We've been doing that for 14 or 15 years. So, our last Cornell evaluation, we had 12 miles of road that are actually deficient. So, at $125,000 a mile, we're actually at $1.5 million behind where we should be. So, how do you fix that? Well, there's something called pavement preservation. And what they've decided is that, instead of rehabbing all of your bad roads all the time, do a chip seal, a fiber mat, a Nova Chip, a thin layer over your good roads. Instead of them lasting 10 or 15 years, get them to last 20 years. But, we don't have that in our budget. We only have enough to fix the bad roads and not even enough. If you can increase that rehab, you can see here, this is your 15 years, okay? So, if you put a dollar in there, this goes up again, and it goes up again, and it goes up again. We're down here at four to five dollars. We don't have anything for that. Now, you might say, "Well, why don't you use your CHIPS money for that kind of pavement preservation?" CHIPS processes are supposed to have a 10-year life. These processes only have a five-to-seven-year life. The only time you can use these processes with your CHIPS money is if you use it as a second step. You do a fiber mat and a Nova Chip, two steps. Because once you use one of these processes and it doesn't have a seven-year life, you can't use your CHIPS money for another 10 years. So, you can't go back in five years and redo that. So, what's missing? My slide. This is what's missing. This is the town major roads improvement budget. When I started eight years ago, that figure was zero. So, I went from zero to 65 in eight years. If I had gotten $25,000 a year, that number would be more than this number. I would have $200,000 to do pavement preservation. That would give me almost enough to do those four miles a year. But after 14 years of struggling budgets and everybody looking at the same amount of tax money, we've got that at the end, and that's just going to keep getting worse if we don't change it. And what does that stand for? Potholes, roads blowing apart, rehab, a lot more money than we have ever had in our budget. So, because it's budget time, I wanted the town board and the folks at home to understand exactly what we're dealing with, with our roads budget. I don't expect it to be $1.5 million. The Town of Hyde Park had to bond for $1.5 million, because they were in the same situation only a few years down the road. The Town of Fishgill had to increase by 25% over their tax cap, because they were in the same situation. So, it does happen in other towns. We're trying not to have it happen here, but if we keep on this path, you can see clearly where we're going to wind up. And as Highway Superintendent, I'm an advocate for the roads. I don't set the budget, but... But it's my job to tell you where we are. And it's my job to have the public understand where we are. Because they're the ones who are saying, "Well, you haven't paved my road in 30 years." Well, guess what, you don't live on a main road, I don't have the money, it's not gonna happen. Is that what I need to say to them? No, I'd like to say, "Well, we can come and do a chip seal or a fiber mat or something, what we did on Mill Road. We can save a lot of money doing that. We can extend your road a little more, we can save it from the water getting in. But we can't save it if we don't have the funding." So that's just something for you to think about. Any questions?
No, just for clarification, and I understand the main point, but for this year, 2018, the town's contribution was $92,000. You would ask for additional funds, we had discussed, to complete three full miles, I think, of the roads that we were doing now.
Yes, and that was after we got the estimate and I was trying to work within the budget. And then because we had the $27,000 from Stella, you were able to transfer that to my budget. It wasn't a, an extra amount that was given to me at the beginning of last year. I understand your point, Robert.
No, no, I just for clarification, I thought it would be Stella money, but actually we used the Stella money for the truck, another surprise truck that we had to get.
And my point exactly, there's many bills that have to be paid. And there are many other things that the town needs to spend their money on. And I understand that. But I have to bring it forward.
Yeah.
So...
Well, I'd be interested to find out how much chip seal money you think would be appropriate to add to the budget, and then we can take a look at that. You know, you know the roads better than anybody. Many roads you would want a chip seal to start to increase that longevity because that would be something I certainly would be very interested in.
Well, also, these slides were not in your other reports, so can you send these to us?
Sure, I can.
Okay, great.
Yep.
Thank you.
And I guess what I'm going to tell you too is that I am going to put that difference between this and this in my budget sheets. And then you decide what to give me. Because in my opinion, that's what we need for the road program. We can do a lot with that. But I am not going to demand anything because that's not my place. That's just my recommendation. So...
So basically, you're saying, we're in a catch-up situation, and how are we gonna catch up?
You're never gonna catch up if we keep going the way we're going.
Well, that's my point.
Yes, exactly.
And that's what you're saying?
This is not that uncommon, actually. I know the town of Rhinebeck has, well, just a tad of them.
No, and I'm not saying it's uncommon.
And they have a $200,000 budget all in each year.
And you'll see them in the same place when we are.
Yeah.
Because we've all gone through that really difficult budget time of when we had zero, when I started, when they actually took out the $50,000 that was originally in the major roads and had zero and only ran on CHIPS money. And there are lots of places that run on CHIPS money. But if you feel that it's easing a little, the financial situation, if you feel that there's somewhere there where there can be just a little increase each year, you may be able to offset some of this red bar. Before, you're in a situation where you've got to bond a million and a half for your roads to get them fixed.
Well, I think certainly that's, well, that's what I thought we did this year, was to take a look at that and say, "Yes, we'll allocate to complete the road." Perfect sense to complete that third road and not have a separate project.
Yeah, it was about, I was a quarter of a mile shy.
Yeah.
And it was, again, a two and a half inch overlay of asphalt. It was in that four or $5 range.
Yeah.
So taking that and using it as a chip seal, it would spread that much further.
Yeah, so I would, well, as a recommendation on what...
Yeah, but we're talking about it on Friday, so you'll get my budget sheets then.
And just for the public to know, one of the things that I'm doing is actually taking inventory of all the assets of our community and the replacement value and costs associated and how we will do that over time. That's something that's never been done, actually. There's only been the capital budgets that they've had here in the town of Reddick were basically just wish lists of what things, you know, what departments wanted. And really with no mention of how they were being paid. And that's something that the Controller's Office would like us to do and something that I've been working on now for a year's time. And so hopefully we'll be finished with that, you know, certainly if not by this budget season before the end of the year, so...
And you also have to include your roads as an asset.
Oh, yes, no, 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 then it includes the roads.
And then, again, they depreciate as well.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Teresa, appreciate the presentation. All right, we're moving right on to number five, discussing the Red Church Cemetery. And this is really kind of a brief discussion. There are some rules and regulations that are kind of a carryover from when we took over the cemetery property. How are we doing it, yeah? Oh, that looks good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good job. So this is a draft that the Cemetery Committee gave us for consideration. I passed on to our attorney to the town and, you know, we discussed them. I guess what I would say for tonight is, this needs more work. We need to cover some issues here. And I would like you all to please take a look at this document and mark it up if you would, so that at our next meeting, I noticed it's a draft slated to be approved until next meeting, but our next meeting.
And also, just as you're thinking about it, this is no longer private, it's a public property. So we're gonna need to think about it maybe a little bit differently and structure some things a little bit differently than they have been in the past.
Right, rules that we can and cannot have on a property now may be different than what the Cemetery Association was able to implement. Okay, so that's all I have on this topic, unless anybody else would like to make some comments or discussion. We'll move right on to agenda item number six. So for the town board and more importantly, for the folks at home, the federal tax bill that was passed limited the deductions for state and local taxes, what is commonly referred to as gold deduction, to a maximum of $10,000. So that means if you're a two-income family where you're working and you have to pay state and local taxes, then you have property taxes, which includes your school taxes, some of that amount may not be deductible. And what that in essence means is that everyone who is in that position got a very nice tax increase, if you will, because they can't deduct that on their federal returns. Well, New York State decided, both the governor and the legislature, that they weren't going to stand for that and that they were going to try and do a workaround. And that is this legislation that essentially enables the local municipalities, school districts to create charitable contribution funds. The residents can make payments to those charitable contribution funds. Up to 95% of that charitable donation can be eligible for deductibility. And that donation can be applied to your property tax payments under the legislation. Now, the big caveat, of course, is what will the IRS say? Will the IRS rule that this is okay? Or will they tell us, "Sorry, Charlie, New Yorkers and other states, your workaround legislation is not legal." And so I've given you this Department of State, Taxation and Finance, charitable contributions memorandum, if you will, a summary of what would be required and how it would work and what we would need to do to establish and administer these donations. It would mean more work for us, certainly for our tax assessor, collector, rather, and clerk. Clerk who also operates as the collector, yeah? So any thoughts? I know there's a lot of information in there.
I don't think we should do anything until we know it's cast in stone.
Well, it's as cast as stone as it's gonna be from New York State's point of view. They passed the legislation. The question is, the IRS, but they haven't made a ruling. And we all hoped that they would, but it's been two months now. And so we're going to need to, if we're going to adopt something, we're going to have to really consider this next month, at least by the end of next month, whether or not we want to implement it.
Yep, whatever effort we do could be down the drain. We do it before they could be wasted effort and energy.
Absolutely right.
And we can't implement it until they approve it.
No, 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 that's not correct. It's already been approved, Harry, that's what I'm...
No, I mean the federal government.
Or the state. Well, the federal government is not going to approve it or disapprove it. They're gonna issue a ruling or an opinion. They've already issued cautionary language, saying, "Be careful what programs you enact, states and local governments, because we may not find them to be..."
That's my point.
Legitimate. Well, we may not get that ruling, that's something for you to consider. So we don't have to do anything about this tonight, but I do want you to, you know, consider this. And at some point, we may need to make a decision. And obviously, if the IRS plays in and makes it easier for us and tells us, "Yeah, you're nay," that would be helpful, but it's not likely that they will.
Do we have any sense from the tax collector, like, roughly how much interest there was in trying to, you know, pay taxes early, like people did last year to try to get around it some more?
Yeah, there was a lot, given that we have...
Like, more specifically?
Yes, more specifically, it's over, over 300 people.
People, or households or whatever taxes are charged.
And that number represents the folks that we could, and we tried our best to reach out to the community, as we always do, to let them know that we were making our office available for early payments back in December of 2017. That was on short notice because we didn't know if we would actually have the roll from the county. And the county was very cooperative with that. And that obviously was a holiday week, so it was only the people who, A, come in the office or mail it to us in time, and B, and I think this is even more important, is those who can afford to prepay a couple of months early their taxes. So I guess the answer is surprisingly, more people than we expected came in early and felt that they would be impacted by that legislation.
Most of the people pay their taxes with their mortgage. Mortgage company holds the money.
Right, so I mean, that makes it even further complicated. And the administration of this is what do you do in that instance? Fortunately, that's not our headache. Our headache is other administrative responsibilities. So again, I don't want you to feel like you need to make a decision tonight, but it's not a great position for us to be in. Obviously, we want to help our residents get back as much of that deductibility as they lost. On the other hand, we have to, we have to do a lot of extra work. We're not sure if it's going to matter at the end of the day. One of the things that I should mention to you, because you were all so brilliant, you didn't know this, but when we decided to do our early repurchase, or refunding of our serial bonds, remember we did that? And the Controller's Office signed off on it. We saved $142,000 of taxpayer money by doing that. Well, that is no longer allowed. That new tax bill eliminated that possibility. You can only do that now if you are within 60 days of the payoff that's happening, right? So lucky for us, we went to that trouble. And I think actually, Dutchess County also did that as well with their debt. Okay, I guess that's all we have for that topic. And we have reports. And I'm wondering if we could do the reports really quickly because we've got some work to do in executive session tonight, attorney-client. We do have a planning board report, Christine.
The planning board was only met once in July and continued to review an application to construct a three-unit multifamily dwelling on a 5.8-acre parcel in our 1.5 district. That was for a special permit and a site.
Thank you. Okay, assessor's office, oh, Robert's reporting, that's okay. With the 2018 final roll completed, we are now working on the 2019 assessment. For a period of time after the tentative roll on May 1st, we're unable to make changes to the 2018 roll, and she wants folks to know that. We're preparing for some new changes with Enhanced Star, if you have Enhanced Star. You want to be aware of that. And we will pass on any new information to you at the renewal of time. Our assessor is in contact with County Real Property regarding to keep our town at 100% equalization, which we have been for many years now. And we're going all, we're going over all the sales. And we'd like to let you know that the month of June, there were 11 sales in Red Hook. She talks about valuations and so on and so forth. And she talks about the departments and individuals being very helpful with her work. Harry, could you give us a quick summation of building and zoning? How we did that department?
Yeah, well, I'll start with the important number. The revenue generated for that department was $5,614. There were 29 grid permits issued, 35 inspections, and 28 CFOs, certificate of occupancy, I should say, issued. And there was one complaint that they handled.
Okay, and Bill, we have a police report.
Well, for the period of reporting, the police had a total of 82 incidents. There were 11 arrests made and the total number of tickets issued in that monthly report of July is 40.
40, okay, very good. Harry, there's also a water board report.
Water board, the water department is really humming along. And we've met all of the requirements for, from the health point of view and made the decision not to continue with the main storage tank we have as it is. And we have at least another 10 years in it. So we will not do anything for that 10-year period and then look at it again as to what we should do.
Thank you, Harry. Okay.
Our water is great.
Our water is great, okay, that's a summation. Bill, if you could report on your task force?
Yeah, the task force in June, July to date began a discussion regarding the concept of Airbnbs in the town of Reddick, reviewing what our existing zoning regulates, which is nothing, and what the village of Rhinebeck is proposing. Task force also began discussing the regulation or prohibition of flag lots in the town of Reddick, a subject which previously was raised by the town's planning board, the regulation of signs in the town of Reddick and a review of the uses allowed in our institutional district. These discussions are continuing.
Okay, Harry, very quickly, do you want to pick out a couple of things out of the record form?
All right.
I think we've covered...
We have...
I could do it. I have one report, it's still a liaison.
Okay, I'm sorry, it just says Harry on it.
I know, but I'm late on too.
All right.
I never get to do this.
You wanna do it?
I think Sarah's muscling it.
Yeah, go ahead.
So there are just a couple of updates. One is that we're going to have new labels for the recycling and garbage containers, which I think will be really helpful because right now it's difficult to determine which containers are recycling or not.
The bag covers the recycling side, exactly.
Yeah, so it's really difficult. Um, so hopefully those will come in and we'll see some better recycling behavior, but you'll look out for those. Um, and John and Doug are starting to work on the recreation budget and looking at recorpyes as we've requested, so that'll be exciting to look at. We're going to be repairing the leaking hydrant in the middle field. I said that was interesting. I hadn't heard about this, that they are holding off on the mowing in certain parts of Red Park West because the monarch butterflies may take advantage of the milkweed, which is great, I think, but they're concerned about the mowing because it may be more expensive if they hold off too long, the grass will grow higher. So I think we don't, I don't know if we should have like a town policy about that or something. It seems like something we had a, I don't know where that would even fit policy-wise, you know, like the idea that we would maybe protect certain habitats or ask the rest department to keep that in the budget or not. You know, that like it would be maybe approvable to have a higher budget for a certain type of mowing if we thought it was a high enough priority.
You would need a new brush up.
Anyway. So that's something interesting to think about. As far as I know, the 2018 summer programs are still going according to what John says here, which is that everything's going smoothly. There've been a couple cancellations for heat and thunderstorms, but for the most part, everything's great, and I know observing the playground program, it seems like it's really well-run this year by Kathy Dunn, so thank you, Kathy. And, um, they're looking at a policy about drones in the rec park, so if you have any opinions about that, write in. Let us know what you think. Update about the Challenger Field, which we've probably already heard enough about tonight. And, um, just an update on the tennis courts, in case people are wondering. We still don't have striping or nets there. There's been some issues with the contractor and subcontractor, and I think those are being resolved. I haven't heard any updates. Have you, Robert, about what the status of that is?
Yes, so literally, the, all four courts had to be repainted because the subcontractor did inferior work right at the last minute when we thought we were going to have those courts available. And so the contractor fired the subcontractor, and so we got our normal striping company in there and painting. And they've done all their work with the painting, and it looks great. We just need a couple of days where it doesn't rain and the striping won't be finished, and so we should be all set there, albeit late. I guess the only upside to that is that it's going to cost us less now because we're, we're going to have some liquidating damages and some penalties, so, yeah.
That's good. Okay, who else? That's it for Rex.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. Well, you going to do tree committee, or are we going to give that to Christine?
This is my only report to do tonight.
Well, I thought you just did a report. Was I, did I imagine that? Okay.
You can give Harry three, Christine and I each one.
What?
I'm happy with my report. Go right ahead.
We need a referee here. Go, Sarah.
Christine's not a liaison to trees, right?
No, go ahead, Sarah. Please.
All right, tree report. Seventeen trees in Pigeon Lane are doing great, and the trees at Denver Way have been pruned and fertilized, and they're working now on Berry, with Berrytown residents on planting a maple tree in the triangle at River Road at Berrytown. Trees now have been planted. And they may do some more tree work at Red Church Cemetery, and they're ordering some more trees for the fall, maybe more for Pigeon Lane, one at Conway's to celebrate their forty-year business, and one tree at the rec park. And then they're making some plans for Hardscrabble Lake. So that's it, very busy as usual.
Great, and thanks to the tree commission for all the work they're doing with the Red Church Cemetery. We've been an enormous help to John Kuhn, who's been just an absolute tiger with that property and taking great care of it for us. And I will say that Jackie was in, Zaca was in last week and just told me she can't be more pleased with how we've done so far since we've taken over the maintenance of the cemetery, so I wanted you all to know that. All right, we have a couple of items of correspondence. One is, again, our shelter report from Hagen Markets on the DSPCA, and a couple of things that need to be corrected there. We also have the thing I referred to in the beginning of the meeting, is this resolution. What would it be clear, forty-five, forty-six? Help me. Forty-five? This is that contract, you know, we were awarded this grant, I think, gosh, we applied two years ago, Department of State, but it takes a while to negotiate contracts and stuff, you know, they have a lot of requirements. And so here's the resolution for the branch. You have a copy of the branch in front of you. And this needs to be in in a couple of days. Did anybody have any questions about it? If not, resolution forty-five authorizing the execution of the grant contract. We received the grant, we know. Whereas the town was notified of the award by the Department of State in the amount of forty-two thousand, four hundred and forty dollars, and it's subject to a match in the town's equal amount or a portion of which may be provided through in-kind services, which is what we are doing. And we, the town board nearby authorized and direct the supervisor to execute and submit the grant contract with New York State Department of State, and I so mote.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you all very much. So that's all we have for this evening, unless somebody has any public comments. Linda, if you would.
Teresa Burke's presentation was excellent, and her pictures really brought out the fact that Echo Valley Road needs more trees on it. A few trees that were there were tall and old growth, and I think with some more trees in there, it would help to bring that road closer and.
Right, yeah, that's, that's what our planner tells us, is we need to narrow the roads, put trees alongside them and get people, you know, traffic coming, and obviously enforcement.
It works, right.
All of those things, so.
And cools the road, and so if you have bicyclists going along there.
Yeah.
They're much better off.
Thank you. Okay, that's all we have for this evening. Thank you very much for joining us. And as always, my office is open. You can send any kind of email or correspondence to my attention, and we'll circulate it with the board. At this time, I would like to make a motion. We go into attorney-client session. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night, and thank you very much.